Hey, John. Hey, Mateo. Hi, Russ. Mateo, you should be all set as the host. Does it look that way on your end? Okay, great. Have a good meeting.
Morning, Mateo.
Good morning. There we go.
Excellent.
I had to acknowledge that the meeting was being recorded before it unmuted me.
If everyone's ready, I'll call this meeting of the Schutzbury Zoning Board of Appeals to order at 11:02. Let's see, our.
John, just a couple, a couple of pesky little things. I think, I think you need to activate me for the purposes of this meeting and the cases and, you know, for the entire bit of time of the meeting. So that needs to be done by motion, second vote of the two of you. And then, oh, John, it looks like you're sitting in a house someplace. Maybe you can take minutes. I thought maybe you'd be in the car.
I was, and I actually got back a day earlier than I expected, so I'm good.
Oh, wait a minute. Mateo is here. Mateo could take a minute.
Yes, I am taking a minute right now. And also, the chair needs to mention that the meeting is being held remotely, even though that seems abundantly obvious and recorded.
Excellent. Yes, this meeting is being held remotely via Zoom link and Mateo is taking minutes for us. I make a motion that we activate our alternate member Jeff Lacy for purposes of this meeting. So a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Welcome, Jeff. Thanks for doing this. The meeting's being recorded. All right, we have an agenda. And number one on our agenda is to review some past minutes. I hope that you've got a opportunity to open these and read them. The first ones are minutes from a June 15th, 2022 meeting. I wasn't there, and I know John Airstock wasn't, but.
Actually, ironically, John, I was, I was just attending to kind of check out zoning board, but not on the board yet, so. Excuse me.
Okay.
Jeff, it looks like you were there. Was there, is there any change to these as submitted?
I, I just read them and, and we're okay. I have comments on one set of minutes, the January 2023 ones, but not the other two.
Okay, so shall we just go through each of these and then we can take one vote to accept the three sets of minutes? Is that, is that a way that we can do this? Yes, let's look at the next set of minutes, which is the January 26th, 2023.
Okay, can I have permission to, to share the screen? Because I, I've already highlighted the parts I wanted to quickly mention.
Mateo, can you make that happen?
I'm all set. Also, whoever just joined is Marty's 13 something. Could you identify yourself for the purpose of the minutes? Marty's?
Probably Marty Wells. I would bet.
No, butter to Russ Greco.
All right, we can come back to that. Jeff, I turned on the screen share.
Okay, I haven't done this in a while. Oh, here we go, screen share, boom. Let's see what it is. Hold on. Oh, there, it must be down here.
Leslie, do you have a question?
Okay. Can everyone see this, what I have up here?
Yes.
It's under unanticipated business. And I, I think I remember this discussion. I was sort of outlining maybe to somebody who had asked, you know, what the principal business of the ZBA is. And so here, I, I said primarily does special permits, often around the lake, site plan reviews, usually for ground mounted solar, and special permits for attached or detached accessory units. And that's, that's not really, that's not what I was talking about. They're, they're really special permit, just like the one we're doing for, for Russ Greco today. Attached and detached, it should be non-habitable accessory structures that cannot meet setbacks. That's what it should say, the way I've, the way I've track changed it.
Yep, I see that.
So if, if Mateo makes those changes, then it will be in line with what I believe I said and, and know is correct. And then.
Are there other changes to this document?
Just very small. The, the next, a couple of sentences down, do we want to change smaller? So I crossed out ADU and referenced non-habitable accessory structure projects to site plan review. So that was a question. And that's exactly what we're doing with Russ Greco today. But we're going through a 20-step special permit. So the question that we were talking about here was, do we want to change that to a simpler, quicker site plan review process? So anyway, that's what it should say. If it's corrected along those lines, it's, it's fine. And that's, that would be for, for us, I guess, to vote on these. Let's see. Okay, that was just a reminder to myself that we were going to think about proposing these changes to town meeting in 2025. But there doesn't have to be any change down below. So the only changes are in this paragraph right here under unanticipated business. So I guess I would move that we make the changes I recommend.
Yeah, I can second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Yeah. Mateo, do we have to still do voice? Voice votes identifying ourselves like Lacy, I, Thompson, I, that kind of thing?
My understanding is that there is still a requirement to do roll call votes.
Okay.
If, if the meeting is being held remotely.
So, 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 John, you probably want to have us do that.
Yep, so that sounds fine. Let's take a vote on that. John Airstock, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jeff Lacy?
Lacy, aye.
Thompson, aye. That's unanimous.
Okay.
Next document.
John, I think, I don't know if you can see it, but I think Leslie has her hand up there.
Leslie has her hand up and she has texted me on the side here, so, because I can do, obviously, several things at one time. She's on the phone with Peter Geez. He can't get into the meeting. She has her hand raised, but she has neither volume nor the ability to speak. Please ask Jeff to see what he can do. I think it would be Mateo, but I'm not sure why, what Peter's technology issue is here.
If it's technology, if it's technology, it's not me that's going to answer your question.
There, there is no waiting room on this Zoom call, so he should be able to just, to just click that link and, and enter unless he has an issue with Zoom on his device. But there, there's nothing I can do on this end to let somebody in or not.
No, right, exactly. So Leslie, the, I don't know if she can hear me. She has neither volume nor the ability to speak. No, so she can't hear me. So I guess Peter will either get in or he won't. The next document that we're going to review are the meeting minutes from August 30th.
I've reviewed them and found no problems with them.
Likewise.
As have I. Shall we take a vote to accept these as read?
Still moved.
And amended.
John Airstock, how do you vote?
Airstock, aye.
Thompson, aye. That's unanimous. All right, that's item number one.
So we're all caught up in our minutes now, I guess.
Yes, it's a good place to be.
Thank you, Mateo. We appreciate it.
Yes.
Yeah, there, there actually, there still are about, I think, six or seven past meeting minutes that will be coming your way over there.
Dribble them in.
I'll, I'll, I'll try not to get Alzheimer's before we review those.
All right, our next item of business is the public hearing on case 24-002, the application for a special permit on property located at 640 Old Wendell Road for an accessory structure garage. That's Russ Greco's project. As this is a special permit, Jeff, you pointed out, we have that checklist that we need to run through. I don't actually have that in front of me. I might step away from the computer and get that.
Was that something that was given to Mateo? Because usually it was Carrie or one of her predecessors that kept that checklist. And so Mateo, have you ever seen that? For, there's two of them, one for a special permit and one for a site plan review.
Yes, so Carrie gave me, she showed me all of the, the location of all the documents in the filing cabinet, and I've opened the checklist on this particular case. So you're now up to step 10, which is the hearing has been opened.
Okay, great.
Where that is checked off.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Yeah, following those checklists keeps everybody out of trouble and I, I kind of, well, we need to be mindful of it and it's helpful if the applicant has it, so he, he or she understands how many steps we have to go through to actually grant a special permit. And these are all steps outlined in state law that we can't deviate from.
Am I remembering correctly, Jeff, that we have a in the special, in our zoning, under the special permits, we have a list of items that we recite, we refer to and, and recite and, and see that the project conforms?
Yes, yes. It's nine, let's see, where are they? And it's actually in the decision that I've already begun on this project here.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna step away for a second and grab my copy of the zoning.
Yeah. Yeah, 9.3 it is. And there are a bunch of criteria. 9.3-2. And, and John, we can certainly go down those. But, but that would be, that would be in, in the the, the later part of the hearing after the applicant has made their presentation and, and then we've heard from the public. It's sort of in the deliberation process. These are sort of our review criteria that we would run down. But that would be after the hearing part.
Great. So shall we hear from the applicant about the proposed request? Russ, go ahead.
Okay, try to make this short. I'm proposing to place a unattached garage, small garage, one car garage. I'm proposing to build it within the 25-foot setback on the north side of my property. When I built my house, I sided my house in such a way, and I didn't have a lot of leeway one way or the other. I had a little bit. I sided my house so that I could, in the future, build a small garage that wouldn't crowd the house, right up against the side setback, which was, this is 1988, actually in 87, when I broke ground, which would have been 15 feet off of the side setback, the north side of the property. Two years later, the zoning was changed. What I don't understand, but what is in fact the case, is that the lot was grandfathered in, but not the setback.
I'm going to have to get my work done and be back as quick as I can.
I'm not going to have a debate about that now, but, you know, I was disappointed when I was informed that, you know, I needed to go through this whole protocol, getting a special permit. So that's what I'm applying for. I want to put the garage right up against the side setback, original side setback when I built my house, which is 15 feet. That will allow enough space between the garage and the house where it won't feel crowded. And there are another number of other issues. I've provided photographs. And I, and I made a statement that I sent to John, and I think was distributed amongst the board about the detail, the minutia of moving the garage over 10 feet and how impacted, mostly aesthetically, but it was a very important consideration, how it impacted me and my family and my concept of this project. I've got, I also provided the board with, I went to all the abutters, there are eight of them. One of them lives out of town, Lizzie Footed. I never heard back from her. But I got all the other abutters, especially, butters, especially Tyler and Amber, who live to the north of me and who are directly impacted because they have the property on the other side, the north side of my property. I got everybody to sign off on it. I provided that evidence to the board. That's in a nutshell. I don't think I need to go into all the detail that I put in my original statement that I sent to the board. That could be made part of the record, I suppose. But it's mostly, I would say, an aesthetic issue. And none of the abutters, the abutters were enthusiastically supported me in my request. Am I leaving something out?
No, I think that's, that covers it. That's great. Thanks, Russ. Any questions from members of the board?
No, Jeff did do a site review.
Yeah, I was out there earlier this week.
Russ, were you able to verify where your property line actually is?
Well, yes, I mean, I'm comfortable with it and Tyler's comfortable with it. There was a plot planned done of the property in 1979, which I have, I have a copy of it here. I have photographs of it, which I can share with the board if they need to see it. It was done by an outfit in Connecticut. That's when Peter Humphrey subdivided the land. There was only one pin, which would have been, there's only three corners to my property because the frontage is a long curve. So, and it's the last lot in the subdivision, well, it's not a subdivision, but whatever, the, 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 the plot plan of that Peter Humphrey had commissioned. It's the most southerly lot. And so that pin was in, and I hired, before I built on the property, after I bought the lot, I hired a friend who was a surveyor in Vermont, his name's Henry Lee, to come over and cite the other two corners, the other two pins. So that's what I was going off of, the two iron pins that he cited when he surveyed the property in 1988. I haven't been able to get in touch with him. I don't know what happened to him. The last I heard, he was, you know, living in a survivalist camp in Idaho. So I'd expect to hear back from him. I do have, you know, I, I researched it and I tried to get his contact information. I had what I thought was a good email and a, a good address for him and phone number. And I tried contacting, contacting him and I have a record of that. Then I got no response from him, just so that he could verify. I don't have any paperwork because I didn't need a plot plan. I already had one. Peter Humphrey had paid for it. I just hired Henry to locate the two pins. So the, the lot is shallow. It's only 150, 160 feet deep. So it was easy for me to clear out the, the underbrush. And I actually ran a string line from point to point defining the north boundary, and I measured off of that. And I'm with, you know, I've got to be within an inch of the true property line. So I measured off 16 feet, allowing for the overhang on the roof. And that's where I sided the garage and, and staked the four corners, which Jeff saw. And I also showed him what it would look like 10 feet over, too. I had that staked.
Okay. Great. Any other questions? Jeff, do we go to deliberations?
No, no, we have to, we have to entertain comments from the public now, the public hearing part of the public hearing.
Right. I wonder if there are any public comments. Anyone like to share?
It, it looks like Marty's trying to do it, but he needs to unmute himself. He's giving the thumbs up. But if, if he wants to say anything, he has to unmute, which would be in the, the, the lower left corner of your screen. You got to click on unmute. You know, failing that. You know, failing that, failing that, we could, I don't know, ask Marty for a thumbs up or a thumbs down to indicate his testimony on the project. Oh, there we go.
There he goes. He likes it.
We can improvise here.
Anyone else have a comment? Question? I think that's it for the public's piece of this public hearing. Do I close that?
Yes, we, yeah, if we have, if we have no further questions ourself, and the, the public has not raised any controversial issues, we are, we are free to close it, and I guess I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
I can closing the motion, the public hearing, excuse me.
So now we gotta do a roll call vote on it.
All in favor, Airstock?
Aye.
Lacy?
Aye, Lacy.
Public hearing piece of the process is closed. We move to deliberations.
We do have we do have several things to consider in our deliberations. The first is, is going to section four point two dash two B two, which is what we always go to when we have these things that are, they're close to the property line. And it says, non-habitable detached or attached accessory structures which cannot meet the setback requirements of this subsection may be allowed by special permit in the zoning board of appeals, provided that the board finds such structures to be in harmony with the residential development in the zoning district and not detrimental to the neighborhood. This provision shall apply to both conforming and lawfully non-conforming lots, which this one is, if it's under two acres. So, so that gives us one standard. Harmony, to be in harmony with the residential development in the zoning district and not detrimental to the neighborhood. For me, this project meets that. There, there's nothing unusual about a garage positioned in this manner next to a house. And the property to the north, which is where the setback line is, dwelling there is, I would say, well over a hundred yards through the woods with plenty of vegetated buffer. That's really what we look for in these things, is that we're not putting something right in someone's face. They'll have a problem with it. So I don't think that's a problem. It, it remains a bit of a question whether, because it's a special permit, we have to go off the nine point three dash two special permit review criteria and go all the way down through, it's a full page full of criteria, whether we have to go down through those criteria one by one. Or not, whether what's in four point two dash two B two substitutes for these special, I don't know if they substitute. It'd probably be better to just run down them quick.
Say the section again?
Nine point three dash two, review criteria for special permits.
Yes, there it is. That's what I was asking about earlier. That it's in harmony, we talked about that. That the benefits of the proposed use to the town outweigh its adverse effects. I don't think that's probably applicable. I don't, we don't, I don't know that there are any adverse effects. The proposed use is consistent with the master plan. Is consistent with the purposes and requirements of the applicable land use district, overlay districts, and other specific provisions of the bylaw, including site plan review requirements and other applicable laws and regulations. We talked about this a little with Russ at a previous meeting, where he is right on the line with properties that are allowed to do this. He's, he's just, just into the next district which doesn't allow it. So that's why he's here with this request. Is compatible with surrounding uses, if any, and protective of natural, historic, and scenic resources of the town. Is accessible and serviceable by fire, police, and other emergency vehicles. Number four, will not create excessive off-premises noise, dust, odor, or glare. Number five, will not cause traffic congestion, impair pedestrian safety, or overload existing roads, considering their current width, surfacing and condition. Number six, will not overload any municipal facility or any public or private water, sewage disposal, or drainage system. Seven, will not cause significant environmental damage due to flooding, wetland loss, habitat, or ecosystem disturbance or damage to valuable trees. Number eight, will not cause any significant adverse environmental effects, including but not limited to A, pollution of surface water or groundwater. B, inadequate water supply to meet the anticipated demand of the proposed activity or use or reduction of water supply to other properties. C, destruction of important wildlife habitats and damage to wetlands or forest ecology. D, noise and air pollution. E, damage to streams or lakes. F, construction which unnecessarily damages the visual amenities of the site, which is not in harmony with the landscape type. G, unnecessary decreases from agricultural or forestry use or potential land productivity. H, erosion resulting from or caused by development. Nine. That's all the subsections of specific findings in. Eight, this is nine, will not adversely affect the avail- availability of public services and the capacity of municipal services. Seems like most of those probably don't apply. Does everyone agree with that?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so, too.
What's called rural citing principles, section eight point three. I can say from having addressed them in the beginning and going through them quickly, that there's nothing in, in this proposal that violates any of those rural citing principles.
Okay.
So usually, usually, we we don't vote on decisions at the same meeting as the public hearing, but we could do that. And if you, if you want to do that, I have a draft decision prepared. Because I'm going out of commission with knee surgery next week, so I, I want to, I don't want to have another meeting and do this if, if we don't have to. So I have a decision ready to review with, with, with you members, if you want, today.
I'd like to proceed that way.
Yeah, I'm good with that as well.
Okay, so what we could do is review the decision, maybe modify it or, or edit it, and then, and then we could vote on it.
Okay.
So I need a shared screen ability again. I think I still have it. Let's see.
Yeah, it should still be on.
Okay, here we go. And all this is, 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 is taking a previous decision for a very similar case and modifying it a little bit.
Okay.
I have modified our header to use John Thompson's phone number up top.
Oh, that's swell. Thank you.
Yeah, there you go. So applicant Russ Greco, and, and Russ, sing out if I get any of this wrong, Russ Greco and Laura Stell.
Yes.
You're on the application. I believe the case is twenty-four dash double O two, because I can only find one other case we did this year. Mateo, that usually our, our clerk keeps track of, of the numbering. And, and I generally ask the clerk, what's the number of the case? And, and he or she tells me. But I guessed, I think, I guessed it's double O two, so.
That's the number I've been using as well.
That's correct, correct.
So we've got November eighth, that's today for our decision.
Yep.
Property owners, Russ Greco and Laura Stell, six forty Wendell Road. The book and the page number that were given in the application, the town map and parcel number, that's all down there. Hearing date was the same date, November eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. And the request, under section four point two dash two B two, install a non-habitable accessory structure, which is an eighteen by twenty-four foot one-car garage with work and storage space within twenty-five feet of the side property line. Proposed garage to be located approximately fifteen feet from the side boundary with the northerly neighboring lot. And that fifteen is from the on the roof, not the, not the side. That's what you indicated, Russ.
Yes.
Okay, are you good with that as your request?
Yes.
Okay, now the plans, there's a site plan and there's a plot plan, and they're, they're both the same plan, and they, they show both the, you know, the plot, and they also show where everything is going. So those are included in the application materials. And then there is also building plans that were drawn by the applicant Russ Greco that are part of the package. So here's the important part, the findings. Based on site visits, the plans presented by the applicant, testimony at the hearing, and in accordance with four point two B two of the county shoots by zoning bylaw, the board finds board finds a proposed garage to be in harmony with residential development, zoning district, and not detrimental to the neighborhood, which is the exact standard we're, we're looking at, because there was no adverse testimony from parties in interest or anyone. And then this accari over sentence from the last permit, I highlighted it, positive testimony from the immediate neighbor to the north was received. The only testimony we received was from Marty Wells in the form of a thumbs up. So and, and I'm not sure Marty is, is a neighbor, or in a butter, or a party in interest, or a friend, or, or, or who he is.
All of those things.
He's all of those things to all people, okay. From all right, so he, he is an immediate neighbor? What is that, across the street, or?
Marty?
Yeah.
He's across the street. He's one of the abutters. The neighbor to the north is Tyler and Amber.
Yeah.
They signed off on that statement saying they had no objections to the project. They had reviewed my plans. As did all the other abutters.
Do we have that in the record, that document in any place, or?
I sent to John. All those statements from the abutters to John. I emailed it to him.
I'll root around for those. We can include them in the package.
Okay, there's no adverse testimony from any parties in interest or anyone. Positive testimony from across the street neighbor to the north was received at the hearing, and other written testimony was also positive.
Yep. Wait, is the neighbor to the north Marty, or?
No, that's Tyler and Amber.
So, yeah.
You need to amend that, Jeff.
Look, let's see. Oh, 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 exactly, okay. Yep, thank you. Okay. And then there is an adequate and deep vegetated buffer between the proposed structure and the adjacent dwelling to the north.
Yep.
The structure will provide additional storage space for vehicles, equipment, and materials now stored in the open. This is actually the, a, a, a key one here. The pre-existing dwelling is positioned closer to the northern property line. So a garage meeting the twenty-five foot setback from the northerly side property line would push the garage into close proximity to the dwelling and intrude on the usable space in the small backyard.
Yep. Great.
The board also finds the special permit criteria listed at nine point three dash two are met.
Right.
And then it has the votes being positive. And the conditions are the same as the last one of these we did. The detached garage shall be constructed in substantial conformance with the site and building plans presented with the special permit application. And the structure shall remain non-habitable. If it was habitable, had an apartment in it, or was in, in any way, an ADU or anything, we couldn't do this. It's only non-habitable stuff. And the rest, the rest of this is all just our standard top signatures and because John needs, if it's approved, John needs to sign, then take it to the town clerk on date. Clerk signs, and then the clerk holds this for twenty days. And then signs off that twenty days have elapsed since the decision was filed, and with no appeal having been filed. That twenty, that twenty day period is, is required in state law.
Who notifies the building inspector that the twenty days has expired?
Yeah, I think that's in the checklist somewhere.
Okay.
So there's your permit. And we could, we could vote on that and, and approve it, and then all I would, you know, if it, if it was approved, all I would do is send a copy to John and, and John Thompson, and he would sign it and take it down to the town clerk. Oh, wait a minute, is there a date? Let's see. Okay, yeah. Okay, so fills it in there, okay, yeah. So the, the date of this permit, the date of the decision is, is up top, so we don't need to put it here again.
Right.
Okay, so there we go.
Thanks for doing that, Jeff.
So Jeff, I have one question. You visited the site and you saw the thing staked out. And that's where Russ is gonna put the garage. That was my only concern, was that it actually goes where it needs to go, which is sixteen feet from the property line.
Well, that's one of the, that's one of the conditions.
Yeah, I talked to the building commissioner, and they don't measure that. So I wondered, I wondered about having, whether, whether anyone else on the board thought that it was important to have a surveyor shoot that foundation.
Well, I, I mean, the building inspector, the, the building inspector should always check setbacks. I mean, they're the zoning enforcement officer.
That's what I think, too, but he told me, he told me they don't measure. I, I don't know where that comes from, because when I worked in Ameris, we measured, but our building commissioner doesn't feel like that's his responsibility. I would love for him to do it, because the idea of having a surveyor shoot that just, you know, adds money to the cost of the project, which I don't think is that really necessary.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Well, even if the building inspector came and measured it, he's not gonna survey it.
No, so he's taken your, your string line
Right.
down the, down through the woods there as, as evidence of that property line.
Yes.
Maybe it's not an issue. I'm just wondering. Maybe it's not an issue, I'm just wondering.
You know, my opinion is that with over a hundred yards of buffer. You know, the, we're not, we're not pushing up against any tolerance for anything here and if 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 that line was a a little bit off, um, it it probably wouldn't make it a lick of material difference.
Okay, I agree.
Yeah, one other thing, if I may, um, and it's no small thing that Tyler and Amber signed off on it. So it's their property line too and you know, I had him over there, I walked him through the whole project to show him, I made a point of doing that before he signed. You know, the document that I prepared. So he basically on the location of the property line when he did that.
Alright, I think we can move on, do we move to a vote at this point?
I I would say that we just need a a motion to um um, to to uh, i- if we approve this permit, we're approving I, I and I. So I, here, I'll make the motion, I I move to approve this uh, a draft permit as presented and uh and um, and amended uh, what we have before us. That's it, that's the motion to approve the permit.
I'll second that motion.
I'll uh, ask for a vote, um, air stuck.
Air stuck, I.
Thompson, I, Lacy.
Lacy, I.
Great, that's unanimous, um, so Jeff, if you um email it to me today, I'll sign it and deliver it to the town clerk and we can start the twenty day countdown.
Okay, right after the meeting, I'll um, I'll ship it over to you, it's in, it's in a word document, so.
Perfect.
Thank you. Good, I have one other thing I, just about protocol, I I wanna ask you. Um, as I called the building inspector's office and to find out exactly how I get the permit released, cuz I'm between a rock and a hard place getting this foundation and I've gotta get out of here by mid-December and for three or four very important reasons. So I I have a short window. She told me that I needed a certified copy of the decision, which I had to go take to the registry to get registered. And then bring the book and page information over to the building inspector's office before they issue the permit. So I want the first available day that I can do that, I'm I'm looking at November twenty-eighth, is that correct, which is the Friday after Thanksgiving? I don't know if they're open or not, but if they are, either that Friday or that Monday, first thing I I wanna be able to take that decision to the registry of deeds. How can I get it before the twenty-eighth? Can I pick it up? I mean, I can't obviously register it until the twenty-eighth. Can I pick up the certified copy of the decision before the twenty-eighth?
I don't know the answer to that, do you, Jeff?
I don't, um. By certified, you mean certified by the town clerk that there have been no appeals?
I guess, I don't know, this is all, this is that's the sum total of the information I was given by the building inspector's office, that I had to have a take a certified copy of the decision, those were her words, to the registry of deeds and register it. And then bring her the pa- pay, book and page number and they would issue the permit.
Well, probably the certification means the town clerk is certified, there's been no appeals.
I think that's it, yeah.
But I think, yeah.
Because you know, normally certified, it it means how you mail something. But but that's not the case here, certified has to mean that, you might wanna shoot her a quick call up there and say, you just mean town clerk has signed off. And the fastest way to make that happen is if John can get it to the town clerk, I don't know, it's Friday, does anybody?
I don't know what her hours are.
Well, I'm assuming, I'm sorry to for interrupting, I'm assuming I can't register it until the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, that's right. All I would be asking is if it's still an, it's still an appeal up till that point, Russ.
Yeah, so I was just asking if I could, if I could get it, at least to have it in my hand earlier, first thing that that morning. I can run down to the registry. Instead of, I mean
But, but
maybe it's only a day or two, ma- maybe that's all that matters, but to me, cuz I guess I've gotta dig, I mean, I can dig beforehand, but I've gotta get puddings in, you have to wait a certain amount of days. Then then they set up the forms for the walls. You know, it this, that's a whole process that can take a, you know, a week to ten days. And I'm already into December by that point. I won't go into all the reasons why absolutely this need to get this in the beginning of December, it's not your
I feel good about us having hurried our part of it, Russ.
No, I appreciate that a lot.
I don't know what to tell you about the rest of it, I, having been in this position myself as a builder, yeah, that twenty days is a hard wait, but it's, that's that's what it is, that's how, that's how the zoning is written.
Alright, well, I'll I'll direct that question to the town clerk.
Great. I think that's our business concluded with you then.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it and I appreciate you expediting it for me.
Good luck, Russ.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, what's next on our agenda is um, Peter Geez wants to talk about a request for a variance, I don't know what this is, I haven't seen any documents about it other than what I just said, so.
I think Peter's in the town hall with Mateo right now.
Okay.
And um maybe prepared to speak.
Who is Peter Geez?
Town citizen and a taxpayer and he lives on, I think that's Locks Pond Road.
High Point, High Point.
Hey, Peter.
Peter has to unmute. Lower left.
I'm actually at the town hall simply because I could not join the meeting for some reason. I had the proper documents, I believe, with the number to join the meeting, but it just didn't wanna work, so um, I figured the next best bet was to come down here and thanks to Mateo, he set up a another laptop, so uh, and I was just asking Mateo, I had uh, forwarded to him already a long time ago. Uh, an electronic plan of this proposal that I have. So I'm just, Mateo is looking now to see. Yeah, I've not seen anything yet, Peter. Hold on one second.
So I'm looking through the Land Use Clerk email file, it looks like it was sent to Carrie in in early June of this year. I never saw it and I'm, it looks like she must have not forwarded it. But I can send that out now to the, to the board.
If I was at my computer, I could forward it to you, because it is a uh, in a PDF form. And the plan essentially looks like this.
Yeah, it looks like a plan.
It looks like a plan, it is definitely a plan. Thanks to uh, Inno Associates, uh, they put together a very expensive, very detailed plan. And what it, what it shows is um you may recall, Jeff, I came in and uh, I made some landlot changes between what would be M seventy-eight, M seventy-nine and M thirty-nine. M thirty-nine being my parcel where I reside and then the two parcels to the north which are serviced by the common driveway.
Can we get an address on this, on this uh, property?
Excuse me? Physical addresses, so I am at uh, twenty-nine thirty-one Highland Drive. And these two properties are sixteen eighteen Highland Drive and twenty-eight thirty Highland Drive, those are two family houses.
John, this is all just south of the athletic club on the opposite side.
Right.
That is correct. Alright, I have the plan up in front of me. Alright, so just to uh that you want to do, Peter? Uh, yes, what you can see, if you're looking there, John, if you, if you enter from Wendell Road and your first left-hand turn is titled Existing Gravel Drive. Jeff, do you have that plan in front of you?
I I don't have it, um, i- is there, is there the ability for you to screen share it?
Mateo might be able to put it up.
Did you find it, Mateo?
Yeah, cuz he just mailed it to me.
Yeah, I'm looking at the email too.
Highland Drive, I see that. Okay, so you see Highland Drive, at the bottom of the map in the center, you see Wendell Road. And then you see Highland Drive.
It's Highland Drive, yep.
You, you travel down Highland Drive from Wendell Road and your first cutoff, you're going to see uh, a road that says Existing Gravel Drive. Uh, that, ooh, you're gonna have to, that's not the one.
That's not the one, is it? Cuz I don't see
If you go to emails, Mateo, and just put in my email address, N E M T R at Verizon dot net. It should pop up. No, that's not the one, it's later. Jeff, before you send that decision to me, can you um, convert it to a PDF? Send it, email it as a PDF.
Okay.
I've been having trouble opening Word documents cuz I didn't pay my yearly vig to Microsoft and now I'm digging in my heels. Alright, well, I should run my laptop, then I could have just shot it off to you. Which is too bad.
This is, this is the beauty of in-person meetings, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, and I had so many copies made for everybody to have a copy and then I thought, well, okay, if I just send it electronically, everybody will be able to look at it on the convenience of their computer, which I know it went out. Did you send it to all of us or did you send it to the Z B A account? I sent it to the Z B A account, yeah. I don't, Mateo's got access to that.
So, so
Oh, yeah, why don't I, we wanna just try and do this. You wanna just describe what it is that you wanted? I'd be glad to do that. Uh, given all the changes that have been coming up with the state requirements and as far as the desire to um go to much cleaner heating systems and air conditioning systems and the like. My understanding is the state is strongly in favor of getting away and they've already pushed this in the eastern part of the state, getting away from all the consumption of fossil fuels. So um, my understanding is coming down the pike that we're gonna arrive at a moment where, when you go to replace an H V A system they're not gonna let you put in uh, fuel oil or propane or things to that effect. It's already happening on the eastern end of the state, new construction, they won't even let you do that anymore. So the biggest problem for me all these years has been the same one time and time again. And it's the reliability of electric supply to these two properties. The uh the service comes in off of Wendell Road and it goes through the woods overhead between three poles. And my problem over the years has been getting the electric company, starting with Mass Electric and now National Grid to take care of trees when they're falling on the wires. And their biggest obstruction for them is that they just can't simply drive a tree truck in there or a line truck. So I have tried as much as possible over the years to keep that clear. But the tree canopy has gotten so large, so tall, it's getting impossible. And I have had numerous occasions where in the dead of winter, we have an ice storm or something like that takes out the wires and then I have to call the electric company to come and the minute they see they can't drive a truck there, it changes the entire equation as far as the ability for them to quickly repair the system. So I looked at several different things and um it seems like the most sensible, most economical is to uh, make sure that a line truck can get underneath those wires. Service the trees, take care of the the dead branches and everything that's about to fall on the wires and take them out. The argument that I've had with National Grid so many times, time and time again, is that you're here, you're taking out this tree branch that took out the wires, why don't you do those as well? No, we can't do that. Why not? Well, cuz it's not a problem now and it's not in our work order. I said, but doesn't it make sense to preemptively remove this which we know is going to come down and take out the service again? And they didn't wanna do it. And the, it all comes back to, can they get a line truck in there, can they get a tree truck in there? And so my thought was, you know what, if I can make this thing accessible, it's gonna completely change the equation. If all these properties go to all electric and we're totally dependent upon the grid to supply heat. Particularly in the winter months during ice storms and any kind of type of storm events. If I gotta be without energy for two, three, four days in January, that's a disaster. And I don't have any backup, all I have is electric heat pumps and and the like. So my thought was, let's make this more accessible. So I had meetings with conservation. Uh, they walked the property, I told them what was going on, what my plans were to address this issue. And uh, I arrived at a point with Beth that she said, she made some suggestions to the changing what I had proposed. And and we kinda got to a point where she said, okay, this looks good. Give us your official drawings and file a notice of intent and we will act on it. So, looking at this, uh the way it is, the way it's laid out because uh, the way the uh, electric service comes in and the poles split right down the property line. And me needing to keep the service road underneath the lines. Uh, it puts the service road very, very close to the other property line. I had spoken already with my attorney, Tom Reedy, about how we're gonna do this as far as uh, new easements for this. And uh, he says, okay, none of that is a problem and the only thing we concluded as being a possible uh issue is the proximity of the road to the side lot line. The town of Schutzbury has a bylaw, as you full well know, Jeff, that says you need a minimum of fifteen feet from a driveway to a side lot. And we are not going to be able to make that happen because of the proximity and sadly enough, you don't have the the drawing there, but you'll see that the pole, one pole is right on the lot line, uh, out on Wendell Road, then it jogs over to uh M seventy-nine and then it jogs back over to M seventy-eight. So the road that we've proposed is gonna be very, very close, less than fifteen feet.
That's the, that's the light blue dotted.
Okay, yeah, here we go. Okay, so yes, it's the light blue dotted, uh, it's actually, no, it's not. Alright, go out to Wendell Road and look between those two lots.
Yep, we see that and the, and the, the power line is the large black dashes that weave back and forth across the line, alright.
You can see the poles, the pole uh, by the existing gravel driveway is a round circle, pink.
Yep.
Okay, and then you can see that the next one is kind of it's, 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 it's right where the jog is, the fifteen-foot jog, east, uh, north-south. Right to the corner of that. That's the other pole.
Alright, Peter? Can I interject here and and it may shorten this all?
Go.
Is that okay, John?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt, but um, what did Reedy say you? What did Reedy say you needed to do this?
Ask that again, please, Jeff?
What did Tom Reedy tell you you needed in order to?
Oh, well, here's the thing. The. There, there is quite a few permits involved in getting this done. The, the biggest hurdle is, I felt, was the Conservation Commission. But we talked about, I talked about it with John, and the issue is. Moving forward, I mean, we're, none of us are here forever. But if, if. If this thing is done, since I own the properties, I'm not gonna object to my own. Own project here. But one day in the future, if this is done. And the abutters look at it and say, wait a minute, this is in violation. Of the zoning bylaws.
Okay.
We were worried that, you know, the subsequent owners of these properties could get into a bit of a tiff. And I, my argument was, well. It is a common service. It's a common electric service that. You know, serves both well. And then we looked at, okay, how many different ways could? And we always look for worst-case scenario. How many different ways could one person object? While they both benefit from the electric service? And then my thought was, okay, all right, let's really stretch it out. Let's say in the future that. One house has the full capability to live off the grid and doesn't need to get electricity from. Our local supplier, National Grid. Then they don't care about the overhead service. And then all of a sudden, they don't need the fiber optics cuz now everything is going from satellite or something to that effect. If they got into a pissing match, then they could make this an issue. It would be very simplified by putting it to bed by saying, okay, let's get a variance. On this and get it recorded. And that way down the road, it's all spelled out, just as we have with the common driveway.
Okay. Peter, I'm gonna interject once more. If you look at, at section eight point six dash two.
I don't have that.
Eight, eight point six dash two, A two. All right, that's the citation. It says.
Six dash two.
A.
A, okay.
Two.
Two, okay.
It says the traveled portion of the driveway, and I'm su- this meets the definition of a driveway, what you're talking about here.
Yes, yep.
The traveled portion of the driveway, that's the. The outer limits of it shall be located no less than fifteen feet from any abutting property line. Unless. Either a special permit or a permit for a common driveway is granted by the planning board. So. We've done one or two, we did one for. On, on Locks Pond, farther down, at least one of these, we did by special permit. So you don't, you don't have to go the difficult variance route.
Okay.
Variances are hard to grant because of. The. Very stringent standards imposed by state law. Special permit is an easier thing to grant. You have to go through just what. Russ Greco just did, you know, public hearing and.
Okay.
And, and all that, but you've got. You, you have a lesser hurdle to go over for a special permit than a variance.
Hmm.
There, there is that avenue and. It, it's, it, it's not a, it's not a typical aspect of zoning, but it is part of ours.
And it's the planning board, which I like.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so what I need to do then is file for a special permit. Is what you're saying, Jeff, right?
Yes.
To achieve this?
Yes. And, and that, that will, just like a variance, you have to notice all your, your parties' interests around you. And you have a. Public hearing. And, you know, we, we can condition it and all that. But we're much freer to. We're much, it, it's easier to grant. Special permit.
All right.
You know, we can deny it too, but. It's just variances are hard to grant. So you, you don't wanna go through that if you don't have to.
Okay.
So Jeff, is this a special permit issued by us or the planning board? It looks, it reads like it's by the planning board.
Well, let's see.
Eight point six dash two, number two. A two.
It, it, yes, it would be by the planning board. Yeah.
So you're saying I have to file this then with the planning board for this?
Yes.
Special permit, okay.
Yeah, planning board does driveway, shared driveways, roads, subdivision roads, or anything having to do with. A road or a driveway, planning board does, yeah.
Okay. All right, so then I guess that's. That will. That will put the ball in motion in a different way, but still. Attempting to achieve the same result.
And an easier, a much easier path, yes.
Easier path. Okay, I'm always, I'm always good with easier.
Yeah.
All right, and Mateo will have the paperwork for that, to file that?
Yes.
Special permit application form, yeah.
All right. Very good. I guess, I guess we're done. I would. For, if you have this now, hang on to it. And you can look at it because this is what I'm going to be referencing, this drawing. Would you guys like paper copies? I have paper copies.
I don't need to see it again, as far as I know. I'm not on the planning board.
We might be one of the listed boards that is asked to comment on these things.
Yeah, so leave a copy, leave a hard copy with Mateo at town hall and we can look at it there.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Definitely do that.
Thanks, Peter.
I guess that's it. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. And Jeff, I guess you're still on the planning board, yes, or?
I am an appointed associate member. But I don't live in Chutesbury anymore.
Okay, I heard that. I heard, I heard you moved out of town. Got, went down to the valley, huh?
Well, and, and up the other side.
Yeah.
I live, I live in Conway.
You can move far enough away to get rid of us.
Okay, well, thank you all very much. I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
All right, what else we got here? Other items not anticipated. I don't know of any other items.
So, I, I mean. In, in. In, in those minutes, we did talk about. About possibly. Doing some stuff with changing. From special permit to site plan review for things like Russ.
Oh. Yep. And.
And. You know, there's things that. That there, you know, for, for Russ, who, who lives out in the middle of the woods with, with. Nobody nearby to be affected, it, it seems pretty easy. I guess you could get other situations where it would be. Quite controversial. And there could be some real impacts of not meeting the. Hate to do this. The setbacks.
We're all going to know, yeah.
But. But the special permit still. You know, for, for us, it, it, it gives us authority that we lack in a site plan review. It's hard to deny a site plan review.
Right.
You can condition things, you can try to influence it. But it's hard to deny. Special permit, you know, if the, if the neighbors are all come, well, there isn't even a, a public hearing with. Site plan review. Neighbors may not even know that their neighbor is proposing something closer to their sideline than. And I think that's why we put it originally as special permit, because. In some cases, this could be intrusive. On neighbors.
I don't, yeah, I don't think that this process was that onerous, you know. I, I hear that he's. He's up against a timeline because, you know, he has some personal stuff and it's, and winter is closing in, but. Yeah, that's, that's true for everyone. Everyone has, you know. Self-imposed or, or external deadlines that. That they have to live with. The, the, the process itself worked just exactly as it was supposed to and it worked fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would concur with that. As I remember back to that conversation. You know, with maybe amending the special permit clauses a little bit to expedite certain things. We were even then kinda saying, yeah, but. You know, we could run into some issues where it would be to our detriment, not to, to have ceded that. That power, if you will.
Right.
So, yeah, I, I guess, you know, unless we have some really compelling. Reason to make an amendment on that. I think you're right, John. It's, it proceeds well enough that it doesn't seem to be a real onerous.
Yeah. I think if, if we had. Sort of a. Internal policy or. MO that if, if it is a simple case like Russ's. We have a draft decision ready. At the public hearing in anticipation of just closing the public hearing, moving right into deliberations and polishing off a decision like we did today. Then we really collapse the timelines.
Yeah.
That was great. I appreciate your, your effort on that, Jeff, cuz, cuz that really does move things along.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure Russ really appreciated it too.
So the, the, the other thing that we have to be looking at, and actually the planning board is. Is looking at it, but it's our business. It's what we do. It's accessory apartments. That are, are called ADUs statewide now, accessory dwelling units. And. I, I need to get you guys the. Some of the documents that Donna McNichol and I have been working on and how to interpret the new state law.
Right.
And, and there's more questions than answers.
Oh, yeah, yep.
But. Chutes, the, the new state law goes into effect on February second.
We have to change our zoning language. Where, where, where do we, we wait to do that by, by vote at town meeting in May?
We don't necessarily have to change our, our bylaw. If, if, if we got, if the town got an application between February and annual town meeting. We, we would, the, the state law would override.
We would just use the state law, yeah, whatever, yep.
Well, there, there are some things that will stand up in our bylaw and other things that are, that are contravened by. The new state law. Like. It, state law says. The thing is either nine hundred square feet maximum or half the. Half the square footage of the principal dwelling, whichever is less.
Right.
Ours says eight hundred square feet. So. If, if, if they, they got the nine hundred by the state law, we'd have to give them the nine hundred.
Sure.
And it also says we can't require owner occupancy. And that is a Chutesbury.
Yep.
That, that's a Chutesbury requirement, so we just couldn't, we just couldn't impose it. But. The smartest thing to do and what we're working on here in Conway is, is just revising our. Our bylaw so that we can make it conform to the state statute by annual town meeting.
Yeah. So. At the webinar that I went to, that was a big question from planners around the state was, well, how are we gonna change the language by February when, you know, we don't, we don't have a town meeting until May? So that's, that's a great answer. We just follow the rules and, and there you go.
Yeah. Like, like those are two obvious things that Chutesbury would have to do. I mean. In, in, in. In a major way, we're already compliant with it. It says you have to offer an ADU by right. And we do. Site plan review is considered by right.
Yep.
All over town, so. There are some remaining questions, like whether a duplex. Can, is eligible to apply it for an ADU. I mean.
A third unit.
Well, it, it comes, it says. Principal dwelling. Is a principal dwelling just a single family or is it a, could it be a two-family, an apartment building? What's a principal dwelling? That has yet to be determined. And the Attorney General's working on all this stuff and.
Yeah.
Donna and I just submitted our document to the Attorney General the other day with about twelve questions that are gnarly as hell.
Yeah.
So, I'll send that to you guys so you can see what we're dealing with.
Thank you.
I think.
Well, it's fun stuff for some of us, but.
Go for it, Jeff.
Anyway. So the, the planning board is, is often takes, takes the lead in, in. Drafting our zoning bylaws. And I know they already had a meeting on the fourth where they first started talking about this. I didn't go to that. That was earlier, that was Monday. So. I, I think our board needs to get with the planning board. Cuz we're the ones that actually do these. Permits.
Yeah.
John, I see a hand, Tom Seifert.
Yeah, Tom Seifert, recognize you.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask Jeff if he could possibly also forward those. Questions, the twelve questions to the planning board too?
They have them already.
Oh, did you send it to the planning board email?
I did. I sent it, I sent it yesterday.
Oh, I'll check. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Do we have anything else we wanna talk about? Do I hear a motion to. Adjourn our meeting?
Well. Yes. I, I'll make the motion after I thank Mateo for, for stepping in. To what is a vital role for us. I, I don't know if Mateo just works for us in the planning board or whether he works for the Concom as well, but.
Works for the Concom as well.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's great to have. A clerk that works for all three and that can help keep us all together.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, for sure.
So with that, I'll move to adjourn.
I can second it? And I will.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent.
All right, Tom, John, I will send you this in just a minute.
I will sign it and run it up to town hall and maybe there'll be somebody there.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Okay.
See you guys.
Thanks, everybody.